Call this meeting to order and we'll establish that we have a forum meeting with a role called vote. Tom Harless?
Here.
Nicole?
Here.
Corby?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
And I'm here, so we do have a forum. Nicole has this meeting in progress. It's your task, thank you. To ensure that we're centering our work around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading our district's Equity Framework, which can be found at the top of the agenda. Joe, would you be willing to read that for us?
I'd be happy to. The V A S D Educational Equity Framework is, in the Verona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our systems such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity.
Thanks, Joe. Item number two on our agenda is adopting the agenda. Are there any questions or comments on the remainder of the agenda? There are none, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda. Are there any motions?
No, we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Corby, motion by Corby, I would say a second. Thank you, Nicole, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All aye, all opposed, signify with no. Tonight's agenda has been adopted. Item number three, we'll turn things over to Dr. Clarity's super committee report.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, everyone.
Fall response, remember that. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us here on a beautiful July day for our board meeting. This begins, you know, technically the beginning of the twenty-three, twenty-four year for us with our first board meeting, so thank you to our board, it's been a year of service, and thank you to our community. We are going to open up, and probably so, with some of our new administrative leaders that officially took the realm on July one, Saturday, don't forget anything. On the Saturday, so I am very excited to announce three new principals and three new associate principals. Beginning with our principals, representing Verona Area High School, Mr. Brian Cox. From Bradger Ridge Middle School, Dr. Barry Love. And Stoner Berry Elementary School, Mr. Mary Saddle. We all know we can't do this work without our principals and as well as our associate principals. We want to give them the appropriate recognition and for all their work and all the services they provide to our students. And so for our associate principals, representing Bradger Ridge Middle School, will be Ms. Paula Arango. Familiar face, and always with a great smile. Sugar Creek Elementary School, Ms. Lauren Mark. And Mr. Van Hoesen Middle School, Ms. Sarah Ozoni. And after the Verona Area School District, our community and our Board of Education, I'd like to sincerely thank you all for your willingness to join the Verona Area School District, given the huge capacity. We know your leadership will mean to your schools and to our community, and most importantly, the students that we serve. So, thank you all, we're looking forward for a phenomenal year. We are going to jump right into our principal meeting tomorrow for a great day, a great day of service and learning together with our principals and associate principals, so we are excited to continue the great work that has happened and expand upon our charge to truly be the national model of excellence in community. So, we know we can't do that work without you, and we're very grateful for your contribution. So, put us on the road to the board, any comments if you would? No, I'm sure you're excited.
I know. My face already looks from smiling, you know, like five minutes ago. Thank you all, I know I've had an opportunity to meet some of you already, and be on someone's side of the committee, and that was very exciting, so welcome. Thank you in advance for the next three years of service to your schools and your students. We're excited about it.
To add to that, I know we've never spoken to the community in the high school or just hearing about different athletes in the middle school already commenting about how excited they are for the leadership. I'd also be glad to hear some stories of our district, but we love to think it's just a great bunch of action, a fantastic, so we're very excited.
I'm glad you had a problem with your chat. I apologize for that. But also, thank you so much, I was sincerely kidding about giving you the floor, knowing you have a great day of learning together tomorrow. You're welcome to stay, but as the day goes on, part of it goes on, if you'd like to, we commit to your family, to your needs today, please, you know, you're welcome to do something, we're working on that, so. Thank you again, and we're looking forward to a great day of learning and a great year. Alright, we're going to quickly transition to three administrative rule updates, just for the knowledge of our community and to our guests here today. Administrative rules were formally board policies that were turned over to the ownership of the superintendent. With that, we have the honor and working with the team to make, to either add administrative rules or make adjustments to administrative rules and necessarily lift those to the board for their awareness. That's how we will continue to support our students, families, and staff. Today, we have three that we'd like to present to you for awareness and answering questions. And so for these, we're going to have Dr. Hawkins joining me for administrative rule 500, and then I'll have Rochelle to pay the job needs for the following for the next two. So, actually, to say that would be lovely to come up with a project. So, to jump right into administrative rule 500 P1, that is for receipt for admissions and placement of students. Issue at hand and the rationale and reason for needing to make an adjustment is specifically around, I have some concerns that we have with open enrollment. And to be very transparent, we are very glad that we are a highly desirable district, and we know that that has placed limitations on enrollment due to the number of families that have moved into the area and making sure that we have an appropriate capacity. So, the open enrollment slots are very limited, we have to make that. Unfortunately, we've, last year, we have uncovered and continue to uncover many cases of fraud when we are looking at open enrollment cases where families actually reside relative to, relative to being in additional boundaries. And so, for that was reason, we have added a second layer of proof of residency in our admissions office, in our admissions administrative rule, to ensure that we limit the amount of fraud that we have as far as putting inappropriate addresses that are within our boundaries and to ensure that our admissions office has the ability to really prove residency. Remember, as big as we are, we are admissions office of two, and that's also a level of support of academic services as well. And so, of course, to ask them to be fully invested in the time of appropriately effectively doing administration and hopefully some continued investigations for issues where we have clear evidence that families may not reside in that area, it's a big task, and if we can take some of that on by asking for some additional layers of proof of residency before we leave, because we're still moving up to investigate our, that is, the claim of residency was not true. Like, are you doing anything about that?
No, other than, it also puts us in line with our neighboring districts. It is quite common to ask for two documents, documentation, to arrive evidence that families should live in our residency area. So, for example, a lease and a current bill in thirty years. So, we want to make sure that we have this documentation that is current, as well as also going the additional step when we have families living with each other. You know, we realize that that happens, but we also still want to make sure that families will undertake the necessary steps to formalize that so that we unfortunately don't have ten people using the same address. So, requiring this documentation will help us continue to provide, to be responsible with our resources, and that at a certain extent to longer delay the fact that these frauds are involved.
Again, of course, make sure that we did not create a second layer that would produce additional hardship, especially we look at families that maybe want to marginalize and stuff, and to end up with those, you know, what evidence and proof that we would not fall into a category where you're actually creating additional hardship. So, you've got to share in more dots with the second layer proof when you go down to that category or not providing additional, traditional pieces that should go along with any piece of residency. And again, we have so, 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 so. So.
I was going to add though, there are cases, and so we realize, as Dr. Clarity said, that while we don't want to pose undue hardship, we will then talk to families, and there are cases where things do happen. However, there should be a paper bill that we can follow, as well as connect them with resources to help review the documentation we need. So, it's, we are still very sensitive and human, to the human element, that there are sometimes cases where families come and things have happened, and for emergency situations where children are placing families. So, we're sensitive to that, but we're also going to connect them so that they will enjoy that documentation they need to support residency.
I think I know the answer to this question, but is this applied to you? Do you enroll?
It does, it does. So, we're not asking current residents to go through this. However, if we suspect that, and oftentimes, this is due to return mail. I mean, this is return mail. And so, if we receive return mail, then we'll probably go and ask you to provide it to residency. That's our biggest indicator, return mail. And then oftentimes, children, the community, I don't want to say report, but children will often say move, and so, you know, we'll follow the necessary steps to require and ask for that.
Any other questions for the board?
I didn't have the chance to work this out, I don't know if it can be adapted from the caption. Can you just go through to, like, the other students behind us? It's like we follow that a lot, and references another student or two. Can you just come to this point?
Absolutely, so we have students that are homeless, underperforming in good time. We can provide for them the option they are able to stay. We also provide transportation, because we realize that when a family is homeless, oftentimes, school is one of the stabilizing places for children. So, we then follow the necessary steps. We work with our social worker, we will provide transportation for students, following the guidelines, but we'll continue to provide transportation for families and students until they have stable housing.
Alright, if you have additional questions, we'll move to our next administrative rule. Rule 230 for status compensation, and we'll double this one up and also do procedure for, I can't look my head. Yes. Alright, what I would like us to know is that while this, these administrative rules were also a request from, as part of our E O C scenario, what's ironic, but also we want to be very public to our community, is that this administrative team already represents a place. If we just put them into official form, we're not to, so that our carryover.
The only other piece that I would add is, last year, when we updated a handbook, some of this was added to our handbook. So, we are just expanding our definition into our handbook to make sure that we are consistent across the board in the practices that we're on doing, and we just want to follow the process.
Just to echo, quick, and summarize it all, Dr. Clarity, just an appreciation again of these administrative rules being a part of your board, your superintendent, but keeping that open dialogue in terms of sharing with the board, the updates, and giving us clues as to how we can search for these facilities and so these capacities as we secure it for the board. So, thank you for the time and diligence that your team takes to give us these updates.
Thank you. I'm going to move us to item C, which is the annual, in this one, I'm going to go before and vote formally, so I'll actually step out and go before, but it's really the approval of our academic standards, which was released in April, which was released in early July, and Dr. Hawkins moved to that slide, so actually, we don't need.
So, every year, so there is section 120, Act 12 of the Wisconsin academic standards statute, we are required to notify parents and guardians of academic standards that are used to guide instruction in terms of V A S D aligns, K-12 English, Language Arts Map, and Literacy with Common Course Standards, the Next Generation Science Network, K-12, and the Wisconsin Academic Standards, recently adopted for social studies until year 2020. We also want to note that the addition of essential elements, and so essential elements are the standards that guide learning for our students, for many of our students, that captain tests means, and that there were gifts that I get by an I U B. So, we're asking that there's any essential elements, which is something that we have done before in the past, even though we've gone through this.
So, if there's no questions about our standards, there's, which is from this year to the next, from last year to this year, we may see some tweaks that we need to board with our great, great, and wonderful standards, whether it will come through and be a document for science subjects, or to, how do we go, possibly, earlier. So, if any of you can step out, we'll take a quick report for a brief moment for, for action.
Bring that back into the board for the questions. Then I would accept a motion to approve the use of the academic standards presented for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Would you mind a pause or a second, sorry? All who are in favor of using the academic standards as presented, signify with a aye. Any opposed, signify. The academic standards for players who are currently present, please. Thank you, Dr. Hawkins. We'll set it back for the super committee support, we'll do a little bouncing today with our board work.
Alright, I feel like we should play the pool and again celebration right now for the, for the next year, if we don't know who the pool and again is. Come on.
Oh, microphone's right here, so.
So, I'm gonna say, we don't know the celebration, but in front of you, you'll have a new copy of a, a phenomenal, let me say, a phenomenal collaborative process. You definitely want to, I know she's very, very humble, but acknowledge and recognize the leadership of Dr. Aaron Hawkins and the board of academic services team, some of members of our community, as well as our board members here tonight, Mr. John Foco and Mr. Mark Lee, who started on the strategic framework team for the diligence and hard work in producing the five-year plan for the enrollment of this leadership in the form of our strategic framework. So, we're going to do the presentation to discuss briefly our journey. I probably got here, but my work, I think, I wouldn't say product, it's very fair. Yes, it's really our way of working for the next five years. We all know that without action and implementation, a strategic framework will be a shell, and you've so allowed that to happen here, especially to know that we've got so many voices getting involved in the development. Without further ado, we'll turn it over to Dr. Hawkins' floor, and I'll do the clicker. For our presentation of the Verona School District Strategic Framework for 2023 through 2028.
So, we're going to open with a video, because what we want to do is make sure that we continue to help bigger community on our progress. So, we started this journey a year ago, last year, in August, and so we want to make sure that we continue to help our community, all of our community, even those families that don't have children in our schools. It's important for them to understand the work that's happening in our buildings. And so, what this video is, is just an update to board here and help our community understand where we are. And so, what'll happen by the end of this week, this video, along with a one-page handout that you have in your, in your, in your, this information, and the video will go out as a, as a way to promote and help our community to, 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 to video. The Verona Area School District is collaborating with our community to develop a new strategic framework. Our current plan sunsets at the end of the 2023 school year. Our new strategic framework will begin at the beginning of the school year 2023 and span five years until 2028. This framework will serve as our school district's guide in charting our path forward as a national model for educational excellence grounded in equity and committed to lifelong learning for our students. This critical work includes identifying, prioritizing, and communicating the district's direction for the next five years. Aligned to our mission, the strategic framework will help ensure that every student in the Verona Area School District will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. The Verona Area School District belongs to all of our students, our staff, our families, and the caregivers in the Verona Area community. Your voice matters. We are intentionally listening as we work to develop our strategic framework. As a part of our work, we identify skills essential for all of our students to possess to thrive in global society. These skills will be reflected in everything we do at each grade level and in every school setting moving forward. This is called the journey of a lifelong learner. As we develop the strategic framework, we conducted listening sessions and intentionally solicited the voice of our students. As we listened, here are the things and the trends that bubbled up. Access and communication, student performance, belonging, climate, and providing a responsive culture, looking at our curriculum and instruction, paying attention to wellness and mental health. The trends were then used to identify higher priority areas, and this is the action that will drive the direction of our strategic framework. From there, we landed on five priority areas. Student agency, community collaboration, value and belonging, wellness and mental health, inclusive teaching and learning. We look forward to sharing more as we continue the development of our strategic framework. Thank you for all that you do to help us on our journey to becoming the national model of excellence grounded in equity. To learn more, please see our school website. So, as I stated, this video will go out to our entire community. So, I'll just walk you quickly through the documents that you have. One of the things we're especially proud of is that it is both in English and in Spanish. That is especially important for us as we recognize and value the languages in our district, so we have both of those copies in front of you. So, it opens, the document opens, and we always highlight and emphasize our mission and our mission goal. We go find our equity framework, our values, in our priority areas. And these are progress, are a journey up to this point. We've shared with you all the previous updates. So, I'm going to move quickly to the journey of a lifelong learner. And so, one of the things that we did with the support of our teaching and learning, parents, tax lover, and our instructional support team, we built out an entire skills progression. And so, this encapsulates our youngest learners, our pre-grad students, all the way to our adult learners. So, we think about the skills that any learner needs to have to thrive in a global, diverse society. These are the skills that based on, we back in the input from our students, from our parents, from our community members, these are the skills. And so, what you see is a progression, and so each skill is built out, and what you see is how it would look when the student has developed this skill. Additionally, there is a link in the document that will take you to a more expansive document that really ties into these skills and how they'll work as we apply them in your life. So, when we think about what's next, oftentimes, strategic plans, strategic frameworks fail, the implementations fail, and that's because people put a lot of time and effort into developing it, but then they fail to continue the work. And so, we're committed to move this plan out. And so, looking ahead, here's our five-year program. So, this work begins as soon as this Thursday. So, we have a team that worked on the development of the strategic framework, will now have a team that will lead us into monitoring implementation. And so, what we will do this first year, we're going to recruit a steering team, and that steering team will lead our priority areas. I believe Dr. Clarity mentioned at one of our previous board meetings, some districts will attack a strategic plan and do one priority every year. Our priorities are all interconnected, and so we can't do one without them. We can't do one without each other. We know that we have to build an inclusive teaching and learning framework. We know that we have to lift up student voice. We know that we have to have community collaboration. So, all five of our priorities are interrelated, and we need one to build on each other, to connect to each other, so that we can live out our plan. So, year one, we'll develop another steering team that will lead the work of the priority areas. We will finalize our, our metrics, the breakers, but our impact metrics, and our impact metrics aligns to our results policies. So, we will continue to report on our success, but it will be through our results policies. We'll finalize our action plan for our strategic objectives. We'll have clear growth goals for each of the priority areas. We will communicate updates and progress to our community. Again, this is just another representation of year one, to highlight the timeline. So, it starts June 2023, and it goes all the way until next year. It also then shows you all what progress monitoring snapshot will look like. One of the things that you will see as we share our progress with our community, we'll have a digital dashboard that will have each one of the priorities, and it will show our community where we are with each phase. And one of our immediate actions that I stated is to develop our success metrics, and those will be aligned to our results policy. We're also going to be very intentional with monitoring the journey of a lifelong learner skills, and how does that look in our classrooms? So, we will develop a metric so that we can monitor and help and allow students and adults to monitor where they are in their progression. And so, finally, I'll just close with our next steps. Our steering team, they'll meet as soon as this Thursday. We will identify our priority needs, so that members of our steering team, they will then convene around each priority area again to plan the action steps needed. We'll continue to have community updates, regular community updates, the beginning of the school year. Beginning of the school year, hopefully you all can join us at our opening day complication. It will be like none of us. I won't even let the cat off the back about what our superintendent and our deputy superintendent along with all the other services will do. Whatever, whatever that may mean, even if it is just the Dr. Clarity and the Chad meeting now or like giving this, it will be epic. More importantly, we will introduce this to our staff and our community and garner their input and remind them of their voice in this together. Lastly, just wanna share with you all what the digital version looks like. So, in addition to the community mailing, so this will go out to our entire community. So, that's our families, any community member in Rollin'. And then, we'll also have the digital version. So, we have an interactive, our interactive framework that is suitable. It will be on our website and released after our complication. So, this is the full exotist strategic framework that will be released at the start of school once we share with our entire staff, our students, and our school. So, I'll pause and ask the earlier questions, and then you can ask the mic for a little while.
Stick the question, should the board expect to be working with leaders or any leaders as students of classes? Or will those, those students?
It's correct.
That's a good question. We, we may need some individual recommendations along the way. Probably aligning this up there on the presentation table. Uh, the word, uh, to our, to our, to our team. Give yourself, you built, youself, you built it with the spirit of our policies in place of should you, I think, like, come back a bit, and you do it.
I, I appreciate that in just a second. I feel this is clear, which kind of values of policies. Like anytime this sort of stuff comes up, I'm like, oh, maybe you can take one for some writing good results policies, but then it just gets amplified in such a twenty times better than any community conduct paper. So, thank you. This is.
I don't know if it's in the plan, Dr. Park, this is incredible, but I think during its implementation and progression, conducting an equity audit at the same time would be a bit of a challenge. So, it will be incredible to do that at the same time as implementation, because I think then you'll have the opportunity to look at our policies and see if you would actually manage at the same time with implementation. I think that'd be incredible.
And to your point, that was one of the things that was very intentional to lead to that. It has a framework to then, so that's one of the next steps on my team. You know, I'll just take a moment, having a servant in the committee to just take a moment to serve reiterate for the sake of the public as well in terms of what you were moving to, right? As the board creating policy, having been in the spaces of watching this develop, board policy was involved in all of that, right? So, that was sort of the guiding of me, us saying, this is what we'd like the district to accomplish. And within that charge, putting it all to Dr. Clarity and your team to make the how we get there. So, appreciating the depth of which you analyze the how because of the multitude of voices that came into this, that you all didn't just take sort of policy and run with figuring out strategy, but the multitude that hours that you all and your team put into hear from everyone for who this is impacting just really lifts up, I think, the nature of how you all function in terms of gathering data to inform your how. And then again, the cyclical nature of how this comes back to the board, how we use our frame to get the data back from you. And I appreciate hearing that there's emphasis not on just data implementation, because that's really fun data, but that there's going to be data impact, right? That we wanna see as this strategic framework continues to live for five years. What does that mean for our students? So, that's really exciting. And we just appreciate the chance to just really highlight sort of how all of these things can come together. So, can I maybe take back the motion I asked you all to do at the beginning of the meeting? Just recognizing the dense nature of our agenda and how much we are pulling with results. If we might make space for public comment at this point in our agenda, just in ways that we have some folks to just speak. And you wanna add those to kind of a reworking of our agenda this meeting? Does that work for the folks that are here to speak? Okay. We're just gonna do our, yeah, I know, right? You're having a comfortable, recognizing you're not next, and now I'm saying people. So, two few people here to speak, and we'll have you come up one at a time. Maya Peterson, who may just start to speak. Thank you. My other comfortable coming to the table, because that would be great.
Can I sit up there too?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And usually make about thirty minutes for public comments.
Yes, we're glad our members, staff, and other members of the meeting, meaning for the opportunities we take. My name is Maya Peterson, and I'm a current student at University of Wisconsin, Wisconsin, Colorado. And this summer adventure, we're in Rollin', and folks in our public college project. The topic we're doing, like, remote today, and then it's school-based gardening. So, this might be something you are familiar with or not, but it's not something that's been for our state. Governor Tony Evers actually proclaimed Wisconsin school gardening is a holy state on the third Thursday of Thursday of May over the past five years. And so, that's May eighteenth this year. It's really a day to honor and celebrate garden-based education and the efforts that individuals making those efforts possible here in Wisconsin. So, why is this something that I'm rather paying for today and starting making education for you? Over the past two decades or so, there has been upward trend in child with diagnoses of chronic diabetes, obesity, and high blood pressure. And while the positive to these diseases is more favorable under the effects, uncommon respect for monthly seasons is a suboptimal diet. So, gardening interventions among children have consistently shown improved attitudes towards and preferences for vegetables, as well as increased consumption of vegetables. In addition, when these gardening interventions are used in association with classroom instruction, we see improved nutrition knowledge in children, in elementary age children. The benefits in the areas of physical activity and social health are have been demonstrated as well in gardening interventions in adults. Less, a little bit less disturbance in young children, but if we extract guaranteed travelable results, we might also see some similar benefits in children. So, with over fifty percent of waking hours, students' waking hours spent in school during the school year, and schools providing two meals per day and often times snacks to these students, schools are really an optimal place for supporting healthy dietary patterns and our base interventions being funded in order to reach this wide base of students. So, just to conclude my thoughts, so in the state of Wisconsin, where we have a rich agricultural history, we don't expect that our local schools can be leaders in the county or other states in implementing garden and certification.
Thank you, Maya. Is it a moment for you, Mark Wertz? Is that correct?
So, I'm Mark Wertz, I'm a resident in Chicago, too, and we also carry and house kids at our elementary schools and ministry. I personally spoken to some local elementary school leadership, and first and foremost, they wholeheartedly believe they are on board because they love this idea. But of course, like you always say, in the logistics or non-trivial, how are we gonna do this? How can we sustain this? How can we make this a priority? And not what it said to me, but what I hear and wonder is, I wonder, you know, how much is this, you know, the hesitancy on a, I wish then you, because mayor may not be a priority of the district, not that it wouldn't be, but just that it has this come down as a little bit of a priority that we want to see. And so, I wonder, it's apparent, how can you do this? And I thought there were a couple ways that as a board and as a president, probably that you guys could show support for this, if you consider it. First off, just formally promoting and encouraging that each school have a dedicated school garden. Regardless of size, just something to be made initiative, just being out there to encourage it. And I'll there's a, go a second step, and maybe as a goal, and say, where if each school identified a site as mutual, just say, hey, if we were gonna do this, where could we do? Access to water, could it somewhere close to the school? What about that? Just for like a starting point. And even if we were to go one step further, even just to say, hey, what if, what if we asking people to come together? It's very interesting teacher, um, to the same way, right? Kind of community, how could we support this? How can we build this understanding, right? A lot of the gardening season is not in schools in session. What about our summer schoolers? What are we gonna do in August? I mean, some of them may be in our country. This could be a great way to, we can be involved in the schools, very ready for different people from different parts of the land to be working together around the county interest that I think a lot of people from from different parts of the community are very concerned about. Now, it's not lost on me that this is one more thing that we're bringing to the four districts to say, hey, you need this, you need this, we recognize that you guys are asking and serving to that. But when we think about this, we think that truly a garden may be enhancing our education. We think about elementary teens, not just learning, not a reason of all these, but learning how that impacts, what they might do as educators, not just personally, but what they might do as professionals. And we think about how it impacts their ability to make healthy nutritious choices, selecting good food, going to the farmer's market and knowing, hey, this is something fresh, something delicious. This is something approachable. And for either our elementary or middle and high school students, how does this impact their knowledge and food security, how about access to building? How about accessing to these kinds of interests and jobs, leaving that space available for them? Things like that, and even so much more than we could be working on. Again, we feel like these things are reasonable. We think that these things could be accomplished in the first few months of the school year. That maybe by October, each school could have a study, but then say, hey, this is where we could pursue. Maybe we're gonna have said, we sent out some interest to the teacher, we sent out a letter of interest to the community, we sent them out to the teachers, and we're looking for people in the growing. I'd be super excited to be the end of the 2023, 2023, 2024 school year. And we're saying, hey, we've got another coming, going system in the county in terms of school-based gardening initiatives. I really appreciate your time for letting us come and speak to you smarter and all the work that you've been trying to do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate your time as well. I do wanna recognize as well that we did receive an email. This designated as public comment, but due to the nature of the topic of that email, I'm not willing to read that in open expression, but just, again, sure appreciation for those who remember giving us feedback and share it to the world since the comment that was sent to you. In the back and forth, we'll take it back to your room. Technically, the agenda, I don't remember the, the support.
So, this time, if I could have Amy and Dr. Austin.
Oh, it's, it's you, I have it.
So, as I approach the speaker's podium, this is a query from our junior board meeting for created, created a performing arts monitoring report. And then that'll be followed by learning and environment should be made.
So, our student, that can recreate the performing arts tonight, as Dr. Clarity said, and how Amy can do it. She was our director, also helping in college and for his pathways. And so, just to reorient, reorient to lift this policy, each student will learn and improve. And this is around creative and performing arts, specifically the VASB Board of Education, values student learning, an achievement that means to exceed grade level standards as well as goal setting as a cornerstone to student learning. Specifically, the Board of Education expects that all students will access a variety of creative and performing arts courses and whole curricular experiences for the continued development of students' fine arts skills and knowledge, as well as exploration of colleges or interests in the arts. And so, tonight, Amy is going to walk you through the policy and also kind of speak to you about our students and some of the things that we've learned and off the daily role.
The opportunity to be here tonight, it was exciting to see some of our creative performing arts highlighted in the video. And so, we are also getting to join some of our trips and know how proud we are of the robust creative performing arts programs that we have, specifically six twelve. When we think of creative performing arts, we're really looking at art and music. In middle school, we have six different offerings, more music, tune and art. At the high school, our course guide has twenty-six different music offerings and twenty-three different art offerings. So, great writing for our students to choose from. When we look at how the data has played out over the past two years, for indicator one, we do see an increase for our overall student population, six, twelve, in students electing to take music and go on music or in an art class. In talking to our department chairs at both preschool and the middle school about this data and talking about what would we attribute this increase to, many spoke to the intentional work that our middle school teams do in working with fifth grade students and their transition. All sixth grade students are required to take a music band, orchestra choir, or general music. But our middle school teachers actually go to each of our elementary schools and work with our fifth grade students to find the music that feels like a really good fit for them. And then they also spoke to the intentional work that we do in our, our relentless commitment to accessibility and the work that we do to help families with instrumental or whatever it is that students might need to make sure that these opportunities are accessible to them. And so, we do indeed see this increase and are excited about the, the work. When we disaggregate the data and look specifically at our focus groups for indicator one A, we do see across the board, majority of our focus groups also followed that trend of all students seeing an increase in their participation in music and art. As we noted in the executive summary, one of the groups that we did not see an increase for actually decreased in their participation in music and art was our Asian students. Having presented several results policies, this has been a trend. And so, this was a question for us about if our students aren't enrolling in more music classes or more art classes or more CTE classes, what classes are they acting to do? And so, we did go through and review the schedules of our students, of our Asian students to understand more about what they were accessing. What we actually found was that proportionately, our Asian students are taking more core classes than the general population. So, their, their results are not being attributed to the different results policies that are many elective courses or science. So, for example, many of our Asian students are taking chemistry and physics concurrently at the same time, which means that then they're not taking an art class or they're not taking a music or a tech ed, et cetera. So, it was important for us to dig into that information so that we understand what our students are accessing. We certainly don't think that's necessarily a negative thing if that supports their career trajectory and what their four-year plan is, really, we wanna make sure that we can. And we're offering classes that support their, their pathways for this. The other group that we did see a slight decrease in in terms of access to creative performing arts was our English learners. In reviewing other results policies though, we recognized there was a large increase in an eighteen percent increase in access to world language courses. And we know that there's only so many electives in the day, so students will be able to increase in all of them. This was an area that world languages, that increased their home participation. Important to us to make sure that we're understanding the trends that we're seeing in student data and to make sure that we're decreasing any barriers to access that people. So, to summarize, our leadership moves moving forward with our results policy two point two point three and continuing to grow our creative performing arts. Programming, we do have five additional sections of art that we're adding next year here at the high school based on student interest and demand. We have four additional music sections that will be added as well. Programmatically, we're also working to make sure that there's not conflicts in the schedule. Sometimes our class is only offered once in the day, not conflict with a music offering that's only offered once in the day. And so, we've been working really strategically in the schedule to make sure we can reduce any of those structural barriers that are created throughout. And I think finally, in talking to our department chairs, our department leaders, they continue to be very committed to student voice and continuing to uplift student voice in creative performing arts, knowing how important it is that these venues, that we be able to express their, their creativity and the more that they can systematically create opportunities to give student voice and feedback and help students feel as though they belong in those spaces, growing and continuing to, to grow, to grow the program.
So, I think that's all we have for this one. What questions might we have about this results policy?
Good question. I'm glad you touched on the, when we touched on the scheduling conflicts, because I think when they went to middle school, actually, we were discussing students and one student in particular, I'm just unsure, isn't that more, but this student. we were discussing students and one student in particular, um, in this country isn't having more, but this student had attended and not long had attended the A L U S. And so he was saying he was angry, conflicted with him taking music and had a bad choice. And I know it's such a struggle because in the middle school, there's even less time running high school for a lot of kids. So I guess just asks the question, we're addressing that at the high school, are we also addressing that in the middle school as a model?
Yeah, I would think your, your, right, there's less flexibility in the middle school schedule when you're six offering versus twenty-six. And what you can fit within the school day, we're trying to be cognizant of where can we provide flexibility to, for example, Badger just scheduled for twenty-three, twenty-four. Seventh and eighth grade all have electives first hours, maybe that allows us to have more electives at once. So if you could go to one, one hour, you could go to a different hour, so that increases the probability of a student's mental health to improve. So that's something that can be always, always a challenge, but it's something that we're trying to be really cognizant of in our scheduling process to make sure that we can provide some access to this.
Thank you. I'm not just a guy, Jayden. I guess my only other question, much like other indicators that we've had, um, do you still feel as though the influence is the right indicator? Is there, some of these numbers are great and almost seventy percent. Do you feel like there's a threshold or objective where it's just like maintain this whole target?
The trajectory data here, I'm very follow up with the team, we are not maxed out. But it's not good for us. But it, we, I just wanted to, I just want to think about how big we review as we spend our time in town. So it's, it's like that student, you know, if you are, you should work in some special, that's why we want to be aware of that.
So that'll be wrapped to the board as they talk during the storm, or those are.
Yeah, the question really, um, it told to me that most of the, um, creative performing arts, the percentage of those interested students, it's like, I shouldn't do this. What percentage are to have that membership?
Likely so with some areas that um we were and I said we were collectively concerned about as we saw this data trend in Germany. Some of the data that the school year, we wanted to likely so it was why the board has, you know, has this duty. Not just monitoring books at the end, but monitoring the data along the way, be able to uh be into the to the Y. The one that I want to look out before and hopefully a bunch of ideas for months and years here for the Maya uh was under physical physical aggression uh and that was an indicator ten point one, indicator two. Uh what we, as we continue to monitor throughout the year and saw this uptick, what we actually recognized was that it wasn't actually a true sense of object and yet alarming was that this was the first year that we had every school teaching the power system uh for and 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 I can't get away. We had uh some of them on Google Docs, we had some of them just like office or forms, but we were, we likely so uh got everyone trained, everyone trained to course identify what actually is this program and then make sure that it was all placed in appropriate space, which is a power school. And so we're confident that the number that you see here uh of the interview is what they're looking for to happen uh very continually between new school year and we'll be able to, you know, to help you down from that. As they want to say, they kind of themselves still alarming, but if I were also looking at it, we have to double here, that's not actually an active reflection over uh of 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 that. Uh so just wanted to name that in advance, we go to that into uh the data, Bob Marri, Jose, uh I would say on positive degree, that is never that, you know, just we looked at it, we got uh figured out what was going on the way and that we were monitoring. And I just monitored, but uh there's some movement in our students and should have been getting the true reflection of uh thoughts or address uh physical physical aggression. So uh with that, I just wanted to uh prepare us to talk deeper about that when we get to that area, but I don't mind uh putting the data in the best of should it exactly um it's actually a problem that we're uh I thought myself.
Thank you. So tonight, um as stated, if that's what you're hoping, you know, Michelle will be to co-present. Um tonight is Owee ten and what this means is the superintendent tells the powers who train the learning environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive to a better learning and higher student achievement. The interpretation then follows my saying um speaks of new standards related to providing a safe and positive climate that is here soon. All students and staff feel welcome and strong since belonging. Students and staff are cared for and supported to be their best. The Board of Education expects the superintendent to ensure that all learning environments within the school district are safe by establishing clear expectations, clear behavior, and school climates that protect students' emotional and physical well-being and addresses this through appropriate administrative policies that disrupt teaching, learning, or operational processes on this school or this school district. But the implementation of our social, emotional wellness programs schools are having a clear model and leadership model. So I want to open up um by just going over some of the leadership moves that we've implemented here. So to ensure that all of our schools are working around social, emotional development of all workers and align with our mission and the policies, the following leadership moves have been implemented. So this year, we implemented the VASD Progressive Response Model, a guide created to provide a more comprehensive process to address behavior. And so prior to this document, um and this goes along with site-based school leadership, school management. Um schools may not operate from their own behavior document, and so we brought some help there. Some alignment and both professional development to our administrator um and awareness. So that everyone is operating from a senior level understanding. We developed and facilitated a district-wide trauma-sensitive school team to support all of the trauma-sensitive um work. Um we developed and implemented district-wide disorder practices team to support alignment of disorder practices here at the level. And we're continuing the development of district-wide PDIS to support um all of our students. Um we we should boom. Um what we, what we know and what we've seen is that um we have pockets of success where PDIS is being implemented with fidelity. Um and those are places where your leaders have been um leaders for a while. I mean, so in other buildings where we have newer principals who are working to um that was describing, sorry. It was a bright breeze, like all of them, and only I was just like, what's going on? Sorry, my idea to me, I apologize. We have mode of transparency. Don't move dick along. Alright, so. But what we know is that in some of our buildings where we have PDIS implemented with fidelity, we see a new place and so um one of our leadership moves is to continue that work and make sure that this is evenly across all schools. Um these leadership moves directly impacted him, the social, emotional wellbeing of all of our students and family life. In addition, the following leadership actions, we will continue to support and review them. So we'll start with Owee ten dot one. Um the superintendent will need a climate that is characterized by support and encouragement for student success. And um what you're hoping is going to talk about. So ten point one point one is related to a nonviolent crisis intervention. And the indicator reads that the present staff were provided with nonviolent crisis intervention or de-escalation training will increase each year. So when we think about nonviolent crisis intervention, we want to break it up into two different parts. One is the de-escalation training, and then the second part is the more intensive training, and that um is called safety intervention training. The safety intervention training is um strategies to disengage in physical or stressful situations. So when you are participating in a nonviolent crisis intervention, the full training is the de-escalation plus the safety intervention training. And so when you look at that, um the percentage that were provided, that NBCI training increased from twenty four point nine percent to twenty six point seven percent. And then the indicators that were really focused on are our leaders, our security staff, our special ed staff, and our secret staff, such as our counselors, social psychologists, um those are mainly started for the NBCI training. De-escalation training, up until this year, was only provided when we participated in the NBCI training. As a leadership move, we put it in Talent Ed, and so every staff member now is getting um trained on de-escalation strategies. So a hundred percent of our staff have been doing the same kinds of steps that the moves for NBCI and our leadership. So indicator two, this is the indicator that Michelle just referenced, um and that each school, each school's power school discipline label show a decrease in physical aggression each year. And we spoke to um the number eight hundred and how, you know, prior to this year, schools were reporting in different ways. The other thing to make note is that we also made sure that all of our codes, our discipline codes were aligned. Um when we think about physical aggression, it defines any act that involves the intentional use of physical force, violent or volatile contact upon major intimidating threat, but cause discomfort to another person in the school environment. This includes but is not limited to daily experiences, any content here. But then it also speaks to physical aggression can also improve growing objects and more individual cooperation. So.
So when we initially definition, we talked about uh having consistency, there's a closer organization with how we identify physical aggression. And there's a bit where a multitude of codes breaks off sites uh that weren't necessarily always always aligned. And so we really try to nail them three specifically codes and specific definitions, please, sir. So for example, a situation of stolen and odd the ability coded as stolen and odd the not a fault of physical aggression. It's a scenario. Also, a uh damage to property could have been caused by vandalism, but not because of physical aggression. When everything went into general aggression before the weather, it causes harm or it was an actual weapon causing harm to a person or property, not cause to the physical aggression. So we want to make sure that we're clear uh our definition and make sure that the system cannot have to a given place, but it will actually be the same.
Thank you. So that was the indicator ten point ten dot one dot two. I'm now moving to ten dot ten dot one dot three. Um in the annual climate survey, we already have increases when we send students, we'll be um the ASB provided a safe learning space for students. And so we see um that from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, um there was an increase in point in this year. Um and so we also see that with our students, I'm sending students to these days with decreases. So um and that is measured by the climate. Uh you'll also see the same, and this is just another measure of indicator ten dot one point three, um and that shows an increase. And again, just additional data of physical. Ten dot one dot four, reserve staff trained in trauma-sensitive disorder practices will increase each year. Um and so you see an increase of force staff. The next move will be to intubate our leaders and then continue to train your colleagues. Ten dot two, superintendent will ensure that all policies and procedures regarding student behavior are culturally responsive, collaboratively developed, appropriately communicated to students and parents, and towards consistency. These are reasonable judgments, you know, believe, this is true.
This specifically aligns with our new progressive response model for ten point two. And what you can see now for indicator one is that one hundred percent of staff were requested and required to sign off on receiving the progressive response. That began on March fifteenth, twenty twenty three, so that all new staff, March fifteenth and beyond, have signed off that data procedure. And it is built into Talent Ed from its upcoming school year as well, as a part of the mandatory training that all staff received. Additionally, on top of what was put in Talent Ed, we want to recognize and call out the fact that each school presented on the progressive response model during this past year's welcome back days. So all educators received complex and detailed information about the progressive response model and those welcome back days.
Uh as Michelle mentioned, I wanted to be very transparent and then pull that forward and state uh that's not the same way highlighted and hopefully I want to stay out of the earth streaming up the sign off piece to make sure that it's that the our ability to actually put it in Talent Ed wasn't so early that it changed the character. I just wanted to come off as being the same, everyone signed off.
Ten point two point two specifically goes one level deeper and provides information and evidence that progressive response models share with staff, students, and the community in a variety of ways. So in addition to what we shared with staff in the welcome back days, we know that the progressive response model is shared with students and staff and parents on the advisory meetings during our principal meetings, during our assistant principal meetings, and specifically there is a website just developed for the progressive response model that is easily found under our students services section.
So ten dot three, superintendent will identify adjusted equities and those supports and responses. The interpretation of this, we reported the creation of values, ethical outcomes for students. The ASB leadership will build systems and provide support that discourages disproportionate experiences for students. The Board of Education expects that systems will be created that serve or meet those supports and responses throughout the school district, will be impactful, and then from modes. From mode inclusive, thank you, inclusive. And so ten dot three dot one, um a hundred percent a hundred percent of the staff that enter, enters power school entries will sign off that they have been provided with training and support in power school um dynamics and processes. And so we want to call out sign off. Um we shared information, um and there's evidence that demonstrates how we share this. Um our power school leader, Mr. Craig Almond and Melissa Gorm, they worked with all of our senators. They tend to be the ones that enter the power school later. Um they networked and she worked with me regularly and provide the training. Um the reason why I'm not actually complying is because we did not have them sign off until later on. So we can speak to the fact that we provide the training, we can speak to the fact that um there's evidence that we've seen an increase in the way that we know we've been afforded. We afforded into the power school, however, um we do not have them sign off on their roster as they're back to the team. So we know that that's partially implied.
So for indicator two, um I want to name and own our uh our best concern with organization. Because we talked about uh indicator two, since we've got a year that we, you know, we began today, it's kind of got on the right wall. And uh you know, this little national training, the state training, and I did that and I've been living with it. Um and making sure that, you know, uh we didn't represent a lot of our school, you know, public record and whatnot, just to, but also and the second student is putting the record records on it, and you still can see that you see a uh a huge number, a disproportionate number of referrals uh for uh Black African American students as well as uh Melissa slash ISS, you know, ISS, ISS uh at thirty thirty forty percent, you know, eighty six point seven of Black African population. You uh of Black African American students, so uh this is a, you know, this is spot on the front and a a area where the uh, you know, the core reading part of earlier has the ability to uh to cross those to the framework of the nation about I agree on it, and you see on it for the same purpose as well, I'm working with this, so we can show that where this is going to be issued and continue to look at that uh clearly not the cause, cause and effect. This production, I think about how people, how people should be, you know, relative to some of the worst consequences that you could have at school, which are uh the most explosive, the expulsion. That's uh continues to be, you know, where we need to give it to some of the problems, continue to address uh our our student group and our group to identify a pivot. I also remain and making sure that the leaders not in the lower expectations, because uh you think that not in lower expectations, but there are certainly
I'm gonna try and make it on question for whether you need to clarify, again, SES, GL, which translates to English on S, but you you know, I don't play SES.
So, so you can move. Thank you. Ten four. The superintendent will appropriately collect students' and pretend confidential student information. And the interpretation of this, um the Board of Education calls it privacy intended to give personal records, personal records. The Board of Education expects that all students, educational records, including safeguards to ensure security and protection, will be parents and your guardians have access to this information because of the number of education rights and privacy act, um requirements are forced with the law. And so this is the indicator one. When a hundred percent of our staff is on off the interview, some GL will see this all along the community board. Michelle?
That is part of the mandatory treaties that are pushed out in this school year, as well as a part of all reading and playing. And the goal for the twenty two, twenty three school year, this school year is a hundred percent compliant. And it's also handled as one to be pushed by the law and as well as welcome back and for all new cases, this is not happening. The rights is first.
Ten dot four dot two. The district assures that a hundred percent of parent guardians request or exemptions from sharing student information on honor. And so evidence, enrollment forms, um parents sign off, there's a full spreadsheet, students whose periods of decline sharing this student information, um and they're not linked here, we have into our, so we do have a way of collecting this information and ensuring that it is shared with principals and those that need to know. There's also a directory available to call and call. We have a standard directory request for exemption from sharing student information on its own. Ten dot four dot three, all four will see their records are being taken in a secure, physical insecure, physical, electronic formats, and um the evidence of this is our power school privacy policy. Um student records, including but not limited to student, their academic records, um are shown through the door. Um and the power school, they have any staff or brand access only to what they need for their role. So um if you're a teacher, you have access to your classroom. Um if you are a counselor, you have access to students that are on your roster or on your Facebook. Um so we don't have unlimited access. Um our um building leaders have access to their building and not those of the district. So this is how we ensure that we're compliant with these. Owee ten dot five, superintendent may not cover any behaviors, actions, or attitudes that are able to contact the students that hinder the active performance of the value of students. How allowing you all to read this inside of me? Owee ten dot five dot one, we are not complying with this area. Especially for students who either think they have a very positive or somewhat negative impression of a culture and climate of various people and friends. Um and this is one of, one of the things that we learned is that. Uh no data. Well, I was gonna speak to the climate survey.
Yeah, I think we were, it's uh two, those are the ones we've got direct with, I see persons with questions there.
Correct.
Um so let's say that it's a question for me.
Sorry.
Uh I think you all got me.
Well, no, I was, well, I was gonna speak to the no data and talk to, you know, the fact that with our cultural and climate survey, we realized that we didn't have questions to support some of the behaviors. And so what we learned, one is that we need to make sure we ask the right type of questions. But we also need to make sure that families, staff, and students understand the why behind this. There's a lot of, um, there's a lot of weight that lies with our kindred and cult, kindred and cultures survey. And so we want to make sure that students have attended, so we have accurate information. Ten dot five dot two.
So as you can see, uh our metric is that students never, everybody, everybody, Chris, Chris, that you asked by staff, you know, they asked by staff, you know, Chris, I can move down, but personally, so I, I mean, since I should, we should. This is one where we, we'll have spoke, but we, you know, we compare who is like what can be a person. And so we, and now we are, this is starting to happen, personally, it's a, not persons, uh, this is only an answer question, but it's still what what's a question, what would you say that was different uh between passions or the development and that, 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 so um exactly we to encompass three percent, it's, it's, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm mostly people or situations, but I, I don't know. So uh but now it's to continue to ensure that our reporting mechanisms are are, you know, for the bar, the speed scale, uh safety level to the person that, you know, if all is really bad, it's pretty bad, a hundred percent that we have I think come to a number of scenarios that have led us to a good, good, good relationship. And not that, you know, but it's not probably you. But I think that's
The one thing that I would add to that is just the response from like this part to us, the main data from help to the building that comes to this school and work through that information investigation to ensure that it doesn't happen. So the data has been recorded to us, we address it as soon as it
So we, and maybe we're saying the same thing, Michelle, but uh our number of reports doesn't show that we're something.
Does that, does that depression, that people don't have control for, say, that?
Yeah, that's, that's we want to have a very comprehensive, as you want to come up that uh school, and that's what's kind of bothering you, that is that the it's a factor number that is reported, it's still a case of fifteen, fifteen separate, so for someone other than
If I recall correctly, I know that that question on the survey was timed a bit, I think it was asked in a similar way that it asked here. I have never been, not in the last year, I've never been. So I wonder if I'd be interested in some of the wrong numbers, that it might be people thinking of an incident from two years ago. But that over the course of two years, that would go twice. It's very, it's very difficult.
Did I just say a sense of that I assume the monster reports on this, what might that be? Just to have, because I, we did a test with Hathaway, made vary depending on who I see as a trusted adult, you know, what how does that elevate to the point of saying, you know, it's happening with background students? Can you just give me a couple of words?
Most of the incidents that have happened so far this year is that that's pretty much a different model of student teacher or the concern. And our teachers and our counselors either tell someone else to stay and just don't know what to do. And it works its way to the principal, usually a couple of hours of the, of the, of the, of the students. The other place that we are starting to see reports is to our title, running around the world. So if a student is uncomfortable speaking, mentioning other adults, they can file it through their, through our app line. It's there. Additionally, we come on tip line, where if students are incredibly uncomfortable, they can leave their anonymous, anonymous tip line with a relationship. Sometimes they leave their name, sometimes they don't, but that is another word that we're
It's really, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remind you that, you know, kind of draw some, a question that I asked about here alone. Not just that, we can get on that, but it's, I'm gonna be really on my, I should argue, really, it's good in the school setting as well. You know, there's something that could be, really technical, that actually costs, like, you know, you're supporting a man, uh, right, or anything near any of those, like suppression for a student to understand, recognize, and answer stuff, and, 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 so. Yeah, but it doesn't take away, you know, what's on there. Yeah, but it doesn't take away, you know, what's on there, for the, for the, so, yeah, just.
I, I'd also point out, I'm pretty sure that the response rate on the survey went down this year from last year. So difference in three percent might not actually be, it's all, the lot number might be the same.
But then we actually find that every single metric that's measured by the climate survey, twenty-three percent increase, I could argue, is actually an increase.
We should be looking at statistics because of the, you know.
Joe just dawned here. Ten point six. Uh, the superintendent may not permit, may not permit a day's on school property. And that schools sponsored or sponsored students or by adults that cause physical internal harm, including any or none. Um, the interpretation is that properties before education expects a superintendent to legally prohibit and discourage any activity that is illegal. That negatively may have to be a limiting person for one. The school would explicitly expect me a legal to leave it. And so ten point six dot one, point one, indicator one, okay.
Michelle? It's similar to that handbook we sent out to mandatory training. We also send out, uh, governance policies as well as community standard policies and that's a new category of information. So all the new folks are seeing that at the beginning of the year, all new hires receive it as a part of our mandatory training and as a chart to our vendors.
Ten dots six dot two. This is one data showing reduction in the number of students who are related to this whole question under this reset. And we saw to this, and we recorded, um, and this is where we can not come to it, or I can, we're ready to share the pool of. Systems that we've seen, that is to ensure that one uses to escape, how can I record you to be controlled, that everyone is able to record in. Uh, owing to not six dot three, indicator one, this suggests that students and families have been informed of districts that have students that's out, not in the progressive response model. And so this area would work for me. And, uh, I know that I can really share, um, with families and, uh, from the internet website. And so that means that's, uh, this is our policy. I'll round up the very to close with a comment, one response.
I mean, I, I was wondering how to do a couple of times. I think that is one, uh, uh, I mean, can I refine my, for the same. That's, uh, for, uh, I, 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 um. That's it. Please don't, uh, put that, in the, so, I know we, I had a collection of indicators that we need to be prepared to, or, or, to tweet. Okay, so, okay, thank you, thank you, for, uh, very, jumping in, for, uh, for, uh, crazy, crazy better, and.
Do you have additional questions from the board, or we have two with the help of.
I have just two. One is in, uh, ten point six, and three, the last one, I just went through, uh, I didn't hear two, that, sorry. Um, the number of incidents related to physical aggression and or disrespect, I think you guys talked a lot about physical aggression and how that's coded. If you could maybe talk a little bit about disrespect, is that a bit of verbal aggression or bullying, or is that coded? Do you still want to be streamlined, coded or not? Bullying is a separate code, it's about stuff, so, uh, and we, we had, I, we probably discussed it last year. We had a discussion that disrespect could be. A lot of it, which is how, and how it, how it's, uh, so we quote, oh, we do, we're very specific, that, 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 so. We don't use disrespect itself. So this, as much as we don't use that, you know, by itself, we don't entirely do what actually constitutes to be able to use disrespect. So this number is really just physical aggression. And if you want to test the numbers about the, or they have to be, you know, verbal, you know, verbal aggression, I can give you the second. If you're into the level of bullying, yes, yeah, you know, hardy, you know, like, really, really, it's not like bullying, that's a second piece of power shit, equal. Oh, yeah. Yeah, just, so, is, will, will you second true for your question, because you need to question yourself.
Um, will we, we try to document it, especially because there's some of the, just like a policy that you're so, 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 so. Hey, physical aggression, can we, but, okay.
So physical aggression, have you, do you know the physical aggression that means in the year, you want to feel it? But then some people, you have these, will you, will you, that you have separate.
If you didn't, if you didn't rise to, the, the, will you, we have, there's always a power dynamic, we put it after, anything that we, 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 that's not, if it's already, it's not like, if you, they, you, in order to get it, will it be categorized in this?
So I have, I have two other, uh, questions. If you consider the data point that moves from ninety-three to ninety-six around, um, third grade to fifth grade students doing safety in their schools. It's not the most, as you mentioned earlier, we're kind of, uh, going, you're talking about, and you do the E S S I act, indicators, warning, per board, that, that they go up with a number of them. But they feel like they're safe, that in school, moving from ninety-three to ninety-six percent, that is, that's the example, or, I think, that, that, yeah, keep up a lot of people, and then, um. You highlighted, uh, disparities around discipline, um, a lot of time left in American cities, in proportion to their population, which I see the report here. Um, I'd also like to point, I'm sure you, just, just, to point out, the state space, uh, disparities among, um, social identity status, and so, is, 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 like this?
Um, so I, uh, for the physical aggression, and what we see documented about four times. Um, is there any way in the future that we could also see the same? Is that encompassed by this same group breakout that we see in ten dot three dot two? Like, there's no breakout number, and there's eight hundred. Um, and the only reason I ask is, is not so much, like, I'm just thinking kind of like, rate of, um, or, for students who have I U Ps, right? They're, they might be a little dysregulately, and that type of physical aggression might be a little different. And when you put their peer plan as opposed to a student that's maybe not struggling with those, do you have that, so, like, that? I think that would just be interesting to see in terms of also understanding for the community to realize, just, I'm glad we're putting this number out there, there's, there's no hiding anything. And also, I think there's some understandable, and maybe some inside of you, there is within the community of, you know, the amount of incidents rates, and like, including the cost or the. For, um, the, the other question I had is for ten dot two dot two. Um, which is, like, letting the community know about our, uh, evidence that the progressive response model has been shared with staff, students, and the community. And I think it was a similar, if you heard, that compared back to your, um, your ten dot six. So to me, letting the community know, I don't really count advisory councils as one, I think it's a good, a good feedback mechanism. But to me, that's not like letting the community know, that's a hell of a many parents. Um, and the, the website, to me, and I just kind of been wondering aloud, was there any thought behind, I'm sending a specific community comment? Or maybe some of the events of those in the past, I think the community, just things in the conversation online has been very interesting to me, that I think our community doesn't necessarily know on progressive response model, um, and say, if we do nothing. And so I'm just wondering if, um, that's, if we feel like truly we have.
Yeah, is working from, well, for Idaho, the difference that, well, from the same, from the, right? Maybe that needs to be, uh, uh, in some, yeah, so, we can, but, until I can, uh, uh, so, as the, as a personal model, I create, that's what I, I, it's part of.
Oh, and the emails that you sent out, perfect.
And to your first, I'm still wondering, regarding the number of incidences, I have a student. As a faculty, he said, yes, we can, we can, follow you. And we do know that there are incidents, incidents where there are students, one or two or three students have had a higher than number, um, incident, we know. Because of their, you know, it's a, it was, it was, because of their, and so we can speak to that, however, you know, then we have the, the whole issue of community, you know. They don't want to say, okay, blowing a G M twenty-nine, and, you know, so, but to your point, when you look at that number, yes, we can look at it. And we can, you know, see how many students, how many more incidents is that.
And then to, uh, for, 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 the, 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 I think about future data, for, I think the board is very interested to see the actual number of students that.
So is he identified? But yes, and that number is super.
Yeah. Joe, give us a good question.
Oh, that's right. I, I mean, I, I had, my question is pretty similar to stuff that's already been asked, um, and including what we're talking about now, but on that ten point one, and if you're two. It, as I read the indicator, it's actually saying that each school's number will go down each year. And this is kind of the district aggregate. Is there a way, or is it something that we want going forward, we want it broken up by site? Because to a point that Nicole made, I think, physical aggression seen at an elementary school level is an indicator of a different thing, that means no aggression seen at other sites. Um, and so that might be really useful for us to know. Also, it might be useful to know if, overall, maybe the district's number is going down, but at one specific site is going up. As we wind up, so just have a look at the wording of that indicator, that's, that's what we're asking for. Which is what, to me, differentiates it from kind of like sets that loops in, in really clunky wording, to, um, disrespect, which I think it was trying to get at. Not just physical aggression, but also bullying, to see that the bullying, so, I'm sorry, John.
No, I want to move off of that, again, I'm gonna play a role, I heard it, I'm gonna send you a good, just point out that we can't choose or dictate what we want these to be, these are jury papers. Um, and I think we made a valid point about why these are different data points that look the same, or whether the indicators down looks the same, but maybe there's a certain intent behind it. Um, and this is obviously, uh, really, I continue to figure out what they want to do. I agree with Joe that it may be nice to see specifically physical aggression as reported here, broken out perhaps by grade level, um, rather than site, than by site, I don't know, whatever the, the two kinds, um, most useful there. But then maybe reserve for the other one, it would be interesting to see the data that's more around bullying, however, you guys are categorizing that. Um, or coordinating the bullying that goes in that, uh, so that it's standardized, so that it, um, so that it is something different. Again, this is not something that we, is a board dictates, so sorry, John, just picked out some of the language, we're like, we might want this, like, we don't want anything. But it might be reasonable to, to do some of these things.
Well, just to push back another bit, what I'm actually saying is, I think what the indicator says is, this is what the indicator says. And one of the questions we're supposed to answer is, is the information we're given enough evidence to show the indicator? Or, uh, and, and so I think going forward, how I would interpret the indicator as it's currently written, is we should have it broken out by site. And I also think that'd be useful, but if, if, like, to John's point, if the district wants to change the indicator says.
My question would be, would it be more useful or more reasonable as our standard is to see it broken out by site or by school level?
Yeah, I like you, I like you for one hand.
Yeah.
And the way that indicators word it, it says, schools.
But changing that would be something, I think.
Can I add, um, quickly, because we, our virtual version fits in, we're interested to see, we would have a virtual version, seeing how much, uh, those things.
Yeah, that's, I agree with that. We definitely don't need to see the same data twice in ten point one and ten point six, so it might be nice to, and that would actually, I think the wording from the ten point six indicator, um, while we're.
I think it would be, I think it would be useful to see that wording more reflect some of the questions that are in our survey, survey about bullying, or students against about bullying specifically. Um, so maybe having some sort of tie in there, so, um, so that data is related. And I just have one more thing I would love, is more of a music, um, you know, I could stare at this data that's coming out, um, by group, uh, for referrals and. How is for the school suspensions, I think this is a really powerful piece of data that we're out there, um, so that we can keep our focus on, um, and our resources are needed. Um, I would have a question, it's not about this, it's not appropriate for this meeting, around how we're similarly looking at, um, the referral process for, um, I U Ps, or what ends up being, you know, the S W B classification, whatever the group. And how are we trying to ensure, or looking at historical biases that happen there around, um, different racial, ethnic groups? And how they might be over there, is any good relevant to the topic, I believe. Um, this, this breakout is great, I'm really pissed off from it, this is what we're working on. I wonder if, is anywhere in our indicators or anything was reasonably to ask, that's a similar question around, um, students who are, you know, five, four, five, two, five, two, six, and, um, classifying this, this, and. Sounds like, I could be.
I was listening to that.
So I was just wondering about the education centers. It's a, it's a that's the part of this question is if those are senior population's questions. That's the question.
That sounds like that was that then it's not. That is. Is that the issue? The data is
I have, I just have one more question.
I have one too.
Oh, good. Mine might be quick because it, it, I, I think I got lost a little bit. It's my own fault in the discussion about training on the progressive response model. And looking at ten point two saying that they have received and been trained on the progressive response model, which seems to imply that training is something more than receiving? Or is, or is the training model module just here's what's in the progressive response model?
The training specifically has not been trusted by them. What is the online intent ad is that you need to cover it. And so that guy wrote this, I believe, saying I've received it and I've signed off on it. And what we are doing for the A D A F this year is more that.
Okay, I think I have.
Exactly.
Yes.
Um, I have a question about training. So indicator one for ten point one. So the distinguishing piece between N B C I that more in depth is the escalation. And I'm understanding the categories as to why certain staff members are obvious to be in that category needing the more in-depth training. Though I can't help but think about multiple scenarios where perhaps the classroom teacher is the first, the first person to play a part of the scenario. And so I'm just curious if there's conversation about growing N B C I, if I can opt in as a staff member or if that creates complexities in terms of, I would like this and I have it. So I'm just curious about probably the discussability. There's a lot going on, right? And as the classroom teacher, I think I'm, I'm at the ground level with so much of it beyond those that sort of category.
We do have some teachers that have asked at a kid now, a student through a high end meeting or a class, to be kind of the N B C I training and be about that. And have participated in that training. We don't have it for every teacher. Because that's kind of further into the life of a teacher business and that goal, there's the rules, a lack of marketing escalation. They will create that um, some of the other strategies or pretty introducing and even writing a lot of, that the escalation coming to our teachers next year. Um, then have information already in place for that. So that's really where we want to focus. But in those very unique situations, yes, we do have classroom teachers that are provided with training. The other thing that we're doing is if there is a team that is really working closely with separation and strengths. They practice regularly. And they go in and they are reviewing the situation. At one point, okay, this is what we're doing. Let's practice, let's review the student, let's work through exactly what we're doing. Knowing how the student might be learning some of the separations at your students.
I want to just say, I am so glad to hear that because one of the things that some of you just do like self, you kind of train in the lab. One of the things that terrifies me is when you provide training that's like once in a while, once in a great while to a broad group of people that aren't going to use it. Because then it can be confusion whether the de-escalation ends and the physical problems begin. And so having those designated teams that are really ready to do this honestly, really hard to see my book. So I'm really glad to hear that. Because yeah, there's gotta be a bottleneck there. You are going to lose teams already. You gotta drill it because it's gotta be a challenge to handle.
And then I'm just curious about the, um, here that we saw about how a power school entry gets done. It's very gross. So my first thought again was if I'm a classroom teacher and something happened in my classroom, am I the one going through this entire thing? At what point is it handed off or partnered? And just the process with which you get this as a day of light in the, right, in the first place? I'm just curious about what that lift means again, if something were to happen as a classroom teacher in my space. How does it end up an incident two? And now we have this kind of data point.
So the teacher, when you reported an administrator, um, just the line, it's been determined after they investigate it. They're the ones who make the determination on how to do it. So um, teachers share and report what's happened, but it's been the principal or the administrator who has investigated.
And so I mean, in terms of not putting right the, but we'll just give a word and not to say that administrators are doing that, as we think is as well, but as a classroom teacher, being able to ensure that classes are full or is something that I don't think is set. And I give it this three days.
Exactly. We want them to teach. And so that's where the administrator along with the power school secretary. So that communication, so the administrator makes the decision, having investigation, but the power school secretary is ultimately booked. An administrator can also enter it, but often it comes through the power school secretary who can administer it. Or um, the high school, someone on that team who can outside of the classroom teacher.
So put any voice to that, just so we
Quick question. With N B C I training and with, with aid of our staff training, is it a surprise part of the training? So this is but I think it would be a strongly helpful person, especially for staff dealing with students of different cultural backgrounds. So don't be a surprise by it.
And some of that, uh, it won't be a result of the entity, but it is a result of the need that we recognize exists. And so um, the work that we have to do in our district, that is one of the things that we recognize needs to happen. And making it happen is the next.
I'm just going to leave it there in a sense of discussion.
But it's just very, quickly, I don't consider it on the board that the way partner is monitoring it for these two classes to be, to be able to rest to be addressing what they want to do. Whether, or if we, if we look at, uh, if we look down at by school of specifically this one faction. And they do it. But still, they do it.
Would you you can afford for your level of questions and all the people in the team for all the information to share and answer the questions. Um, so I will accept a motion to do the same and to uh, accept the monitoring report of O E ten into So that means we can begin to report the discussion about the rate of progress. Both in my call, is there a second? Something by four being any further discussion as a board before we finish a vote on these of progress being
I um, two points. First, I would love us as a um, a board to revisit. I love us as a team, a board and a cabinet, maybe three of the indicators of ten dot six. I do not know this because I don't think that's over. Um, I think they're pretty process focused, but I also give all of us a lot of credit because these were indicators from our first stat. And so I do think maybe we could have written out better, better, the results might change now that you know. But I just would love to reconsider in that sense. Because I still don't know that uh, that I feel confident that either way these have really been approved. And I don't think that says anything to much about the data as a return. Um, and then I just kind of want to maybe just put out into this space that I think this is a, a, a rough around that we all acknowledge that there's a lot of non-compliance. Um, and, and not like tracking at all. But the, there's a few cinnamon on, to me, it's almost half the past and half the past. In fact, I don't know, in the sense of this feeling is a real order.
I thought about that too. And I think one piece that struck me a little bit was just speaking to the, the total incidents of physical aggression. Felt a bit as though there was what is the term you're referring for, for building the process, right? That, you know, initially you heard the conversation of there wasn't a recording mechanism. And so, right, so I, so I felt myself wanting to put that piece of non-compliance into a slightly different category in that one. Because it was a capacity, that's right, a capacity building moment. Otherwise, I was feeling similar to you. At what point does this become not reasonable versus just with the exception? So by extracting that piece of data, then I was really looking at how an analysis area and how about that.
I had a similar take to Nicole, kind of incident. I was trying to think it out in my head. It's like, if you have ten indicators on an O E, it doesn't mean each indicator is exactly equal. And to me, the two biggest, two most important indicators that get at what this O E is all about are the two big areas that we're not complying. And that's it's, so first, speaking to the incidents of physical aggression, I first of all, I really appreciate the administration kind of owning it. And saying right off the bat and being transparent, saying this isn't acceptable. There are good reasons that explain that this data may not actually be telling you in fact that the same thing is what it seems to be telling you. But still owning um, um, that it's not compliant. So I do really appreciate that. There's also some uh, consistency between what the data is saying and what at least the anecdotal perception in the community is. Both that's been presented to us kind of collectively and individually from the staff and also from parents. There's not a lot of, who knows the validity of that anecdotal representations, but when it's matching a kind of severe data point like this, I think we'd be doing a disservice if we didn't really acknowledge that when we're analyzing this. I also see some danger in starting to approach this task that we have of assessing compliance with our own expectations of there's a pull towards any non-compliance trying to justify it and saying, oh, well, here's a reason why we're not compliant. We're doing a good job anyway. And I agree with that. Every time we've had a non-compliance, I, I haven't yet come across a non-compliance where I've been angry about the data. But it's still our job to say this is not compliance. These are the expectations that we've set in the indicators. Uh, so I, I, I guess that's kind of a pushing pull that I
It's a joke because it just kind of I don't know. A lot of people have, I suppose, maybe not for, do anyone sees the right question? You know, if, if there was some context around why, yes, which is good, but also do you do well, what happens sometimes? Just having the comments, how do you, I can say the period is just why you're using this style stuff.
I would really love to have the changes for me was lacking a little bit more in this piece. Um, or sorry, kind of energy leadership moves. I really enjoyed those in the past. And the um, some of them seem a little less focused or just maybe not getting as too much of the need as long ago, to your point, or you know, maybe speaking a little bit more to what are the
I am going to say I have similar yet different response with that. I saw a lot of the non-compliance here and I see it in the context of, you know, my Joe's indicating feedback that I think we all kind of got. Incidents is that they hear a lot at schools, particularly involved physical aggression. Uh, so simply the big ones on our parents' pay dollars. Uh, and I think particularly since school physically come back from pandemic, that number has been higher nationwide. Uh, and so, you know, I think when I look at this, I have that initial viewer jerk reaction of, oh, it's, you know, it's usually, there's and then when you really look into it, I mean, when I really thought about it, we've got a couple of just nationwide trends that we're, we're working on here. And we're working on like under the heading of an O E that is huge and very messy by its definition. Like we're talking about a kid's feelings state. So when we're looking at the three percent of the decrease, it's good and safe. The more stipulations are going like, what is that like? I don't think this feeling state is a big ambiguous thing. Right. But I would say that part of that's baked in there. It's not us to change that, but or to leave them out of the question track. And I think that the administration is rightfully struggling with it. I'll be asking the right question in a way that you can understand. So I felt that that explanation would not exist without. When I look at the data around um, racial or um, or demographic disparities in referrals, high school and in schools to class suspensions. For us to be in compliance, we would do something that like almost no other school, school district is better than country. Like that's a high bar. I like everything about our, our work each year. But that would be a very surprising slide for me. So I was like, great, let's put this data out there so that you know where we're allocating our resources and our focus. And similarly with the eight hundred incidents, that effect, I think that's the one for me that was like, okay, let's have a conversation about this. Because that feeds into this narrative around bullying and around physical aggressive business school that has just been in the public eye. But I um, conversation about this just began where our medias, our international medias don't help us on this one. Because it's all due to rule about schools. And um, and this, this data point feeds in there. I think that explanation that we've gotten is a good one. We are trying to streamline or maybe aggregate data in a way that will make sense for you over here. And that process is not always included yet. To really do that, we're prepared. I think that Joe asked really good questions about like, what is reasonable in terms of how that data then is disaggregated to be used in the future? And, and how we think about that data in the context of bullying, which is specific under ten point six. And it's something that we highlighted when we were talking about our culture surveys of kids. So I think this whole discussion has been really where it's supposed to be on these things. And given the nature of this O E, I'm not surprised at all because this is a big one. It should have a lot of, should have a lot of messiness. Um, and if we could just tie it up with a couple of new quantitative data points, we'd be doing it wrong. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm actually very happy with all that, with the discussion that we had with that, but happy with that presentation. I don't see it as justifications for why we're not compliant. I see it as part of an ongoing discussion against this nationwide trends. It will work and be better. I'll be honest, discussions in a lot of other places just aren't happening. And that's great. Um, so I'm, I'm kind of similar yet different.
I think a lot of it comes down to the difference between aspirational indicators and realistic indicators. And I think we've, we've kind of put a balance. Like sometimes we have aspirational indicators and sometimes they're realistic. And, and it's, that, that makes it hard for me to, to judge the import, the relative importance of non-compliance. When you look at the indicator, like, well, we're never going to do that in one year. That's what we want to do.
It's the question of can it still be great work that we're doing and missing?
Yeah.
I don't think it is. Like there's no, there's nothing that goes beyond complying on. There's only one other policy that I'm voted not complying on and I still thought it was great. It just didn't end up being compliant. Just those numbers and it's not up for me to rate whether the reasoning is good or not. If it was put forward by having
I'm also not sure I understand the difference between compliant with reception.
That's fair.
That's fair. Where's Meredith?
Where's Meredith?
Oh, maybe we should just take a look. Which I, I couldn't help but think from training on the partner district and the color coding that they use for this process of like, is this green light? Is this yellow light or red light? And that's what I keep coming to. Is this like red light, stop everything? What are you all doing? Or is this green, or is this yellow light, which to me signifies with exceptions of like, the train seems to be moving where we all want it to go and make this data look differently. So are we just putting the caution on with exceptions versus the full press stop of this is not happening? So I, I don't, but
That's a good way. That's a good, that's helpful for me at least to think about it that way. And with the, the data around the physical incidents, if we felt that that was reliable data, I feel like that's a
Yeah.
flash green light, but I don't think we do think that's I think we don't really know what the data is. And that's why to me, one thing that would be helpful, and this is a little bit separate from this discussion, but I don't really feel entirely comfortable waiting an entire other year to have this discussion again. That maybe we said at another point, like a, a few months or halfway through the school year that we get like a, you know, here's where, where we're at compared to this point last year.
Especially to look at the value and I appreciate this really um, distinguishing processes, but that is valid here. Staff training and increasing the things you're talking about doing and elevate what's going to happen this year before staff. And that was crucial to making the shifts that we want to see. So yes, processes, you know, they mean, however, that's a, that's a good point. And I think to better state, my concern is that the processes around compliance and making sense that weren't, were the date. The, the non-process data and that was the lesson. But you're right. That doesn't mean process isn't important because it's So we officially have a motion to vote and approve based on how this is being presented, which is in compliance with exceptions. Do we feel like we're comfortable finishing with a vote, given that that is a motion of approval?
Yes.
So all those in favor of approving this monitoring report as being in compliance with exception. with exceptions, signify with aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. All of you, the vote? Monitoring report, yes. Okay.
Yeah, that's what we do. I, you know, I thought about 10.6, I was gonna, now that we're all ready for it, I was gonna do it. I just had my, I don't know how to...
10.6, no?
No, I don't know how to act it. I don't know how to... 10.3. Not 10.3, 10.3, just, just the way that the breakdown to records, you know, to my school record, I just turned for hours, it's just like, generally for questions.
Thank you, because I asked him to speak.
So again, this was up here in regular, but it's okay if it's more of a like, 10.3 from the table. And we, we know better than you, so it's appreciated, because I've seen it, definitely wrong. I don't know if the board's got it wrong. I mean, I use a good one, I know the board's not wrong, but I don't know, I don't know if it's like, it's very, it's something that is, it's a difficult one.
I feel like, oh, he's hitting on equity audit, you know, speed volumes, because I don't know how that would give you, or what data that would give you to prove this. I have a feeling it would give you some, but just the fact that there was an equity audit, or that there were parts of equity audit built into whatever angle or region you're doing, around this, like, some of the questions that were asked around this, by a standard, the questions you're asking, just showing that you're doing that, so maybe it's speed to type one.
I don't know, you should probably say this before. Well, and Brian, it's gotta be the shame.
I don't know.
Let's go.
What? That's good. Stay there.
Oh, sure. We're done with the vote. Yes, yes, we did agree the vote.
So, so that concludes...
But we've done, we've done a lot of board action already, so we're definitely jumped up. We've covered board action A, B, and C. So just stepping to general board updates.
Uh, all the work, Doug Hawkins. Well, thanks for that, good, good, and jumping in, it's very, very, yeah. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, I think, do you have a board update to share, is that correct?
Oh, yes. This past Saturday, 100 Black Men Madison, which myself and Dr. Perry are part of, hosted an event here at the Valona Area High School. It was actually our first in-person meeting since the Indian became here. And the, what we did was, we recognized our students that we sent to national competitions that actually did extremely well. One of them was the stock market game, where we sent five, seven students to compete nationally. They actually won.
Wow. It's so... Stock market game?
Yes, where they basically had a hundred thousand and fight money to fight with it in the best, and we sent them to the real market exchange to basically generate revenue, they had revenue, but it was revenue. And we acknowledged them and gave them awards for that. So that was one. And then bringing it back to Verona, our students that competed in the African-American History Challenge actually made it to the national competition. So we recognized them, we acknowledged them, gave them awards as well. And then Dr. Perry and I did a presentation to all the parents, students, members of 100 Black Men about reflections on the '22, '23 school year, and looking forward. Actually, we talked a lot about what's here, the equity framework, the strategic framework, the vision of the district, how some of our initiatives with 100 Black Men have helped students within the district. It was a great experience. Parents are still contacting us today, as of this morning, saying how compelling it was to hear the initiatives of the district, our operational expectations, how they fit into the strategic framework, equity framework, belonging in UConn City. So it was really well known, I was hoping Dr. Perry had some remarks. You know, it was very appreciative, I'm a, I don't recommend doing a real news. Worthfully stated, it's all initiative.
Fair enough.
Hope it's not, because I got it. No, I, I, it's been, you know, we've been, we've been, I'm just walking out, that day, when you could, it's a challenge, talk about all your, all your long, you can talk about our vision with board, it's, I'm always inspired to be, you know, the stuff, so, to be able to have our community kind of like, this early age, the responses by asking us to, to video or over things, send out to the pool, could be a community resource, you know, just say, you know, I think Laurie, as I say, she was there on Saturday morning, we did a pre-k as well as, I think it was family, I think talented, it gets overlooked too much, and the courage is so talented, and everybody's, you know, it's really, perhaps the all, so, so, people can go together. But, yeah, there's an opportunity to bring our, bring up community, others, to put that back together, and just talk about, like, work together, a bunch of things.
I think one of the most, the most, for me, who was here, a student, well, she's a parent now, but she was an African-American student who went through the district, they're hearing about the things that we have going on now, and her applauding our, you know, what's going on, told me that, like, mentioned.
I did just want to put a quick update on the progress in Pittsburgh. And with the Calum Madison acquisition, Wire Patch and Services has now matured the Pittsburgh domain. And so myself and Meredith are going to tour the facility in a couple of weeks, I believe, with the mayor, and some folks from city council on the front. And they were super excited when we were there to hear that someone from the school district is getting Calum to be present. So just wanted to go there, and to be to get out in the community and talk to all of them about the services that they provide for our students, something I'd rather do on my journey.
There we go.
So just very quickly, one, one minute. This is a, so, so, we definitely want to hear, this is the board owns this, it's the government's model, that we just wanted to give it, in particular with you, to give a, provide some feedback to, on some of the markets, as far as your thoughts around our communication of this and what's in our community's hands. So the community clearly understands the government's model, they were very shoulders in forming that, I was, you know, a bit of that, we've been, maybe, we're all a member of community, some party, and essentially a very key piece that either worked well, like, maybe, so, we're just here because we're owned by the laws, to think about, or...
Then should we add this feedback to that? Speaker Trump? Okay, going to, hold on. On the air, general board updates, Mary. Um, just making sure, since we did a little review of arranging, if we do have anyone that's ready to pull it out, so I can go with access. Okay. Then item number six, then we get a chance to look over the support committee consent agenda, are there any questions? Very done, the support committee's consent agenda was approved, as presented, moving on to the board consent agenda, we'll get a chance to put that over, any questions? Very done, your board's consent agenda is approved. Item number eight, this feature agenda items, we heard the complication mentioned multiple times, so make sure that it's on the calendar in addition to board meetings, knowing that I think the September 24th might be a long one, right?
Yes.
All right, moving on to agenda number nine, closed session. At this time, we are only adjourned to close session under the Wisconsin statute 19.85/17. You need to deliberate or negotiate for purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding potential purchase of a property. Do I have a motion to move into closed session?
Moving.
So, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Juan Carlos, you know, a motion that is second, we will take a roll, all votes to continue to close session.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for sitting here, Sean.
Hi.
Nicole. I think Corby.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
And I am an I. We are now in closed session, and if they give a one, can we take like a five? Yeah, I mean, I'm a three.